Getting done except for executive session.
Well, yeah.
I'm confident.
Welcome to the December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda was Executive Session. We're going to delay that. Waiting for Town Council still to arrive and get situated.
When she gets here, we'll go into Executive Session.
Vote to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November thirtieth, 2020.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so with Town Council arriving, I'll take a motion. Yep, it's on there. Just the motion will, as written on the agenda there, please add at the end to return to open session.
We'll make a motion to enter into Executive Session. Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section twenty-three B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to enter into open session.
And to return to.
And to return to open session.
Second that.
Any discussion on that? Okay, Mike Hiller-Jay is going to recuse himself being a member of a bargaining unit within the town for a roll call vote to go into Executive Session. Kevin?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, we're in Executive Session. All right, welcome back to open session. December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting. Public announcements, Mike, did you have any public announcements?
None tonight.
Kevin?
Nothing.
Jim?
Nothing.
Alex?
No.
I just wanted to remind everybody that Abington Celebrates is holding, with the Abington Strong Fund is holding the Abington is Lit Driving Tour. Check out the Facebook page under Abington Celebrates. There's a cool little map there. You can drive your kids around town and check out all the nice lights for the holiday season. Any public comments? We have one public appointment, a listening session for Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant. So Scott, you're leading this?
Yeah, just as you may remember, last week we discussed this rather briefly. Is because I mentioned Luchey over in the planning department had found there was a grant that we were eligible for and it's, you know, to help invest in some local downtowns and areas and certain areas just to, you know, I thought what it was to try and make it more attractive and bring people to the downtown areas or find, give them something to do that would bring them down there. Unfortunately, a lot of our plans were to try and do something earlier in the season, but that because of COVID, we're really trying to avoid having a lot of people congregating in one area. But some of the things we had asked for and put in for the grant were, you know, like picnic tables that we could put out. We have these banners that you see the photos of that will be hung up in the different areas around town in the two business districts. Those banners were actually, at this point, they were purchased by Abington Celebrates, but we did put it into the grant. So hopefully, if we do get the grant, we can reimburse Abington Celebrates for it. This, you know, other things, we ordered picnic tables, like I said, we had hoped to do something where maybe we would have a, like a food truck rodeo and have the local restaurants be able to do that and we'd pick a few areas in town. So these things we're still looking forward to doing. The grant's still out there. We are going to be looking for other people in any interest that they might have in it, but it looks like it's going to be more of a spring thing at this point than a winter thing. But the banners will go up and, you know, they'll be up there for the season. We'll try and find something, obviously, come spring and keep it up and just sort of do what we can to brighten up the area. And I'm here to listen to any comments that you might have on it.
Any comments, questions from the board? Anybody from the public? Okay, sounds good. Moving on, Mike, we had, we were waiting for Town Council to arrive. When we went to open session to begin, we voted and approved the minutes from November thirtieth for nothing. Any reason why you'd want to go back to that?
No.
All right, thank you. Annual license renewals. Usually, we go through this page by page, so if you guys have your packet. The motion for these will be to please vote to, the motion to approve the attached or the list of license renewals. And normally, we put pending receipt of all paperwork, up-to-date taxes and satisfactory inspections. I'm going to request that we skip the up-to-date taxes part. Talk with Scott, there's maybe two that are not paid. They're, they're not behind like two, three years or anything. But if we change that to pending up-to-date taxes by March thirty-first, just to give, maybe if there's a couple struggling.
Sure.
Businesses out there, a couple extra months. And should they not pay by then, we can always call them in.
We can revisit.
And take, take care of their license that way. Just, just as an extra thing. So that'll be the motion. We'll go through this page by page, the first page being combined Class One and Two License Renewals. Top, top business being AJ Equipment Repair, the bottom being Universal Auto Body.
Could we do this page except for LA Used Cars?
Yep. So the motion will be to accept the license renewals for AJ Equipment Repair to Universal Auto Body excluding LA Used Cars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going back to LA Used Cars, the motion will be to approve the license for LA Used Cars.
Make that motion.
One second. Any discussion on the license for LA Used Cars? All those in favor of approving the license, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention, Alex, please answer. Okay, page two. Combined License One and Two, combined Class One and Two License Renewals for Vito's Auto Center, that's the only license on this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Vito's Auto Center?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, so now on to the next page of licenses will be for Abington Ale House on the top of the page, down to Mira Gaza, excluding the Columbus Club of Abington. All those in favor of approving those licenses? Oh, I'm sorry, we should make a motion first.
Motion to approve.
Got ahead of myself.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, separate on the first page, the license for Columbus Club of Abington.
Wait a second. Oh, I see.
Yeah, I took that one out of the first.
Oh, okay, sorry. Wasn't paying attention.
We already approved the first page and now we're on to, just for Columbus Club of Abington.
Motion to approve Columbus Club of Abington.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to.
The ayes have it with one exception.
Okay, the last page here is for Old Town Cafe on the top of the page, down to Star of the Sea Livery.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Old Town Cafe, down to Star of the Sea Livery?
Aye. Aye.
That is unanimous. Licenses are approved. Next on the agenda was an operational update from Deputy Police Chief Chris Cutter. Deputy? Thank you for coming in, thank you for hanging out while we were in Executive Session.
No problem. All right. Again, like to thank you for having me here and giving me an opportunity to just touch upon some of the things that we do in Abington Police Doc, Police Station. I would like to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and a Happy New Year to all of yous now, because I know by the end of August we get, so we can just cover that now. So I'm going to bounce around a little bit, it's, and I'll touch upon a few of the issues with the management study, but I'll also just talk about a little bit in general about what's going on at the department. We're coming around that time of year again for another Officer of the Year nomination from our sergeants. We started that last year, it turned out well. Officer Daverden, who eventually was promoted to Sergeant Daverden, was awarded the Officer of the Year last year. And the nomination papers, or nomination things have gone out to the sergeants to, again, nominate this year an officer. We didn't really, we don't really have anything in place for the sergeants, so I thought, I was thinking of a way to kind of recognize them in a way, you know, this time of year where we have the Officer of the Year, et cetera. And came up with kind of an idea that, and I've asked the patrolman to kind of give me some feedback on the sergeants. And then my thought was is that at our next staff meeting, which will be just after the first of the year, that I can relay that information to the sergeants and kind of let them see the positive impact they have on the officers and give them some, some feedback on, on what they do, because I think that's important. I've already got some feedback from one of the officers and it was all positive. And he, it was some, there were some really good things that he said about the, about the sergeant, and I think it's, I think it will be nice for the sergeant to hear that. So that's what we're, that's what I was working on a little bit. We have recently been awarded Municipal Road Safety Grant for $20,000 to do the five mobilizations that the, the state usually has us do. We will be beginning that on December sixteenth, and it will begin with a, with an impaired driving enforcement effort through the holidays. So, and then it will continue on with, with five mobilizations. There'll be a winter, I'm sorry, there'll be an April distracted driving, a May click at a ticket, June speeding, summer impaired driving and a quality, oh, so those are the five, will be the five mobilizations as well. With this grant, we do qualify for equipment and we're, are, some of our handheld radar units are getting old, so we're going to be using the money. We don't get a lot of money from the, from the state for that, but we do get a portion of it. It's, will be enough for us to afford a, a brand new handheld radar unit. So, you know, that's in line with what the grant, you know, allows us to purchase with their money. So I think that is good. You know, we have a, an officer that really likes, you know, Officer Brian Feely really likes to apply for these grants and he's, and he's been, he's been really good at it. He's, he's an asset to, to myself as far as applying for these grants, so, and he did apply for this one and got that one. And I'll talk about another one that he got along with Officer Simmons, Sergeant Simmons. Just a quick update on MEMA, because we are getting into the winter. As I transition into more of a role that the chief kind of dealt with, I recently, last week, met with our regional coordinator through MEMA. He's actually new in the position, so we're both a little new in the position. But just to talk to him and reassure, he, you know, reassured me that the full resources of MEMA are available for us here in Abington should we need it. And that was kind of my point to say, okay, you know, you know, I want to put a face to a name, but we exchanged contacts, he came down to the department and we met for about a half hour. He brought me a case of hand sanitizer, so that was good. We can take all that we can get, so, but just to, to touch base with him, we do, you know, we currently, the community room at the police station, you know, the chief, we've heard him talk before about the EOC being there, if we, if there's a chance that we need to activate an EOC or anything like that for, for anything coming up this winter, then, then most definitely we will do that. And again, you know, something that maybe the, the residents of town don't know as well is that we're signed into, and that was done through the board and through the Town Manager's Office, you know, a few years back, but we do have a regional mutual aid agreement with, throughout the state. So if we got into a situation here in Abington where we needed more equipment or we needed some other resources, that we are on, on point with that, and we just take a couple phone calls. But, so just, you know, to kind of let people know that that's just one of the things that we, you know, try to take care of down there and try to keep our fingers on. Just online training, one of the management studies came up with, you know, we should be incorporating some ethical conduct, fairness, compassion and cultural sensitivity into our training. Our offices are currently participating in online training for that. So they are working on that, I anticipate that they will be done within a couple weeks for that particular training block. Website upgrades, the, the management study talked about getting some things up on the website and our website is, is, it needs to be updated. And so I've been trying to pick away at a few things with our webmaster to, to, to get the site upgraded or updated. One thing I don't want to do is overwhelm him, obviously, he's a, he works part-time, taking care of our website and he does a great job of it. And so I've just been touching base with him to try to get some things. One of the things we did do is we went to an online platform for records requests. It's not that people can't put, you know, a records request in the old way, it's not that they can't walk into the station and do that, but it saves us time, it saves us paper. So now people can request records directly from the website. That records request form gets sent to our, our woman in records. It also gets sent to the chief's administrative assistant, it gets sent to me, just so we're all in the loop if someone's out that day or whatever else that we have that. So that was one of the upgrades that, that I had the webmaster do. The other thing, the management study talked about, we had a section on the webpage for filing a complaint against an officer, and it was our oversight that, geez, we didn't have anything on the commending offices. So we kind of, to make it simple, I just combined the two of them, but you will see a small little section there that talks about, on the front page, about commending an officer. There was, I believe the webmaster is going to put some type of, make it a little more prominent on the main page, but right now it is up there, it is functional. People can go on there, click on there and they can shoot off a, an email to myself commending an officer for the work that they've done. Fair and impartial training with instructors, I touched upon this briefly last, last time I was here, but we were able to get a couple instructors into fair and impartial training, or a few, a couple offices, Sergeant Daverden and Sergeant Doherty. And they are going to be instructors and I hope to roll out a program of training with the offices in fair and impartial, fair and impartial policing. So that was nice for us to get seats into that class, and they just recently got training, so I'm assuming right around that, after the first of the year, I will work with them to implement training department-wide for that. Just one of the touch base and let you guys know that we're constantly partnering with other agencies. I mean, recently, I reached out to Detective Sergeant Sweeney to partner with the Secret Service, you know, one of the things going on and maybe some of yous have been victim to it, but the skimming devices on ATM machines, it seems to be a little more prevalent. They, they pulled one off a ATM machine in Wayman. Prior to that, I was only seeing them, you know, predominantly in the city in Boston for our area, but Wayman was a little close, but, so we've, we're going to be reaching out to the Secret Service. They would be our forensics team to, to analyze anything that we did come across here in Abington, as well as any intelligence that we can get from them regarding any other skimming devices that may be in our area or anybody that may be working with that. So we're constantly looking for avenues to partner with other agencies. Just this week, you know, Friday, well, last week, Friday, I had homeland security in the detective's office and I had the state police in the detective's office. So we are constantly working on the, on the criminal end of things, we are constantly working to collaborate our efforts with these other outside agencies that can offer us assistance. So it's a constant, it's a constant process. Metro SWAT, we were able to get, I had two offices that were interested in joining Metro SWAT, so it's a rather large commitment for the department, so I've limited it to one officer, but, and I've, it's, and I met with both the offices that, that wanted the position and they know that the best man wins. So they are both going to go through the, through the process and then Metro SWAT will designate who of those two joins the team. So we're hoping that, we're hoping that we at least get the one, one on there. They're both great guys, they're, I think, you know, this, you know, with the rest of us hunkering down because of the storms, but they got to get out there and run, lift and do chin-ups and whatever else to be able to get it onto the team. So I, I haven't heard when it, the tryouts for the team are, but I anticipate probably sometime in the springtime. And those gives those guys, the two guys that we have that were interested in it, gives them enough time to, to get in shape and be able to compete with that. So if you guys didn't see it on some of the social media sites, but our offices participated in No Shade November, it was nice, Officer Brady kind of coordinated that, and I think our offices raised eight hundred to nine hundred dollars for, for the charity. So, so that was a nice, nice event for them. COVID updates, I just wanted to touch briefly about, you know, we've, we did well for, for nine months and didn't have any issues. It seems, and I, it seems like, I, I know more and more people now that have been diagnosed with COVID than I ever did. And, which seems a little different to me, because I figured maybe in the beginning we would have had more people, but, so we've, we had two offices that tested positive for COVID. There isn't any indication that that was, they were job-related. It appears that, that that happened due to outside of, they were, you know, they were exposed outside of the workplace. And as a result of that, we did have, as a precautionary measure, we had a few offices quarantined for a period of time. You know, luckily, I think maybe the longest quarantine was maybe three or four days based on the, the way the, the exposure came about. But, so those two offices who did test positive have since recovered and have returned back to work. I also had the Plymouth Police Academy, they're having a little problem with some COVID tests, testing positive as far as their recruits. So one of my recruits, I pulled, put him on quarantine for a few days because of his exposure to one of the candidates that were at the academy that he got close to. So my second candidate that's at the Plymouth Academy, it was determined that he didn't get exposed to him, so he continued to work. Those two guys at the Plymouth Academy will be coming out, they're slated to, to graduate on December thirtieth, so those two guys will be out. So I think the academy is really just trying to limp their way to the end and get these, get all the student officers graduated. But, so we're looking forward to that. As far as some of the COVID things, you know, we're, you know, down at the police station, you know, we're, we're working, our offices are wearing masks in the building, we are taking temperatures, Chief Nuttall was able to get us a, a hands-free thermometer, so we have that mounted on our vestibule for anybody coming into the station. We have a second thermometer that we're going to mount in the cell block area so that any prisoners we have coming in will work to try to, to try to get their temperature. We've, you know, we're practicing socially distancing down there, we're trying to limit our offices coming in off the road to do reports, trying to cycle them in at different times, whatever we can do to try to, try to minimize the risk and, and, you know, so far, we've, we've done okay with it. You know, I think on the police end of things, it's something that we were, you know, we're not used to wearing PPE, where, you know, there might be, you know, your nurse and your doctor are used to wearing this stuff on a daily basis. The offices, it's been, it's been a huge learning curve for them to stop and think about putting on PPE before they go forward and, and handle a call. And that's, so, so there's a, there's been a big learning curve with that. They're doing a great job with it as far as making sure they're trying to keep themselves safe and their, their apartment is safe, but we're still, we're still working on that. But any chance we get to improve our operations down there as far as what we can do to limit exposure, we're trying to do that. Another grant award, Officer Justin Simmons, Sergeant Simmons, sorry, and Officer Brian Feely applied for a JAGA grant, a JAG grant, Justice Assistant Grant, and we were awarded $15,000. I was pretty happy about that award, it gives us, there's a little bit of that, 15,000 will be equipment, and the grant was written to give us a database that will help out in investigations, you know, kind of like your, it's really just public information, but it, so our, our detective or our offices can plug in a name and gather information if they're looking for someone. And it pulls, it pulls in, you know, utility bills and, you know, real estate tax information and stuff like that, but it compiles it all and it gives us a, it gives us a, a chance to, to find someone if we're looking for someone or figure out associates that someone may have. So that's the equipment end of it. The other end of it is we wrote the grant to kind of hit some of our areas that we're having problems, so it's going to be more of a crime suppression grant, we're going to be putting offices out on overtime, almost like in that, the prior grant I talked about under the Governor's Highway Safety Bureau there, this grant, we're going to try to have certain mobilizations. I mean, I'm always cognizant about overtime and it's, but, so we're going to try to have mobilizations and also target particular areas in town that we may need to do based on our statistical data of crime. So I think that's a, that's a nice thing for us to, to be able to do and put these guys out there, that I think the, the officers will be excited about it going out there. We'll see how we're going to deploy them, in what areas we're going to deploy them, but it, but it gives us a, a chance to do that. Grants, Officer John Sayers picked up on a, the Stanton Foundation, which is a K-9 grant. So he did an awful lot of work to, to obtain this K-9 grant. Now, we haven't got it fully yet. The last report I got was we were moved on to a, to the second stage of the grant process. So, but I'm excited that we are going to get it. I think that we will get it. It's a grant for us to be able to, to purchase, train and deploy a K-9 with an officer. So the grant is going to cover pretty much all expenses, at least for the first three years anyways. It's going to cover retro, retrofitting a cruiser, it's going to cover, you know, kennel, it's going to cover overtime, it's going to cover some portion of vet bills, dog food. They really thought about everything, the Stanton Foundation is specifically in place to, to provide police departments with, with K-9s. So I think that process is going to move forward. We would most likely be sending our officer to the Boston K-9 Academy and he'll be getting trained on that. We also, the grant also provides us with reimbursement for his training time and for him to go to the basic school. It's going to be a dual-trained dog, it'll be for patrol and drugs. So he will go to the first school for the patrol portion and then after that, he will spend another six to eight weeks for drug school, training the dog. But again, all the grant money should cover soup to nuts as far as finishing purchasing the dog and whatever else, so, so pretty excited about that. The other end of that, and the other side of that is it gives the offices another opportunity. You know, in the past, due to some of our staffing issues, we haven't had a lot of opportunities. So I felt that this was a good opportunity to, to, to give someone a chance to do something that they really wanted to do. And, and he's done all the work as far as getting the grant and getting the money and all that stuff, so, so I think it's a positive for.
The Stanton Foundation was also the one that gave us the money for the dog park.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, so, so that, yeah, it rings a bell to me, yeah. So yeah, so that's, they do great stuff for the animals, so. So hopefully we, hopefully I get something definitive on that. But ultimately, it's about a $30,000 grant, that's, that's what they cover and they break it out as far as what, what we can spend on each topic under the, under the K-9, but $30,000 should, should do us well. Early intervention system, I'm not sure if I mentioned this prior at the last meeting, but we are up and running on the early intervention system. I think it's a great thing, it formalizes the, some of the situations that we would probably just, you know, talk about at the station and move on, but it brings in that process that, hey, look, if an officer is experiencing any type of problems, whether it be professionally or personally, that there's some system, formal system in place to be able to recognize that and be able to address that prior to it getting further on down the road where it may affect the office's work performance to the point that maybe he had to, you know, lead the job. So, you know, it covers, we have certain triggers that we've enacted, but, you know, just, for instance, we had a sudden death recently and sometimes, you know, trauma to an officer and trauma to anybody is, is cumulative. You know, it begins to, to grow on you as, throughout the years, so. the years. So we had this particular sudden death, but it was it was a difficult sudden death. And and so with that, there's a formal process that was enacted as part of the policy. And the sergeant is required to sit with the officers and talk to them and just see how they're doing. And that was something we never really had. We never really formalized the process, although we probably had an informal process. The formal process, I think, is going to go a long way to to help these guys and to legitimize the the idea of getting help if you needed and the idea of that trauma is cumulative and that, you know, we're not invincible people out here and we can all use some help. So just with the sudden death, the sergeant interviewed three of the officers that had to be exposed to that. And subsequent to that, he submitted documentation to myself as far as where he thinks it should go from there. But the policy is it's a nice policy that if we needed to enact some type of the plan, it has the 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 ability to do that. And then we can follow up with that plan. But, you know, we can offer EAP or pay support or anything like that that the officer may need. So that system is up and running. Emergency Preparedness Grant. We wrote a grant for emergency preparedness. You know, one thing we had, so it's a it's a it's a it's an equipment grant, basically. So one thing that we were a little deficient on is we have bullet resistant shields that we can use. And we've always had that, but at a different threat level. We really never had a bullet resistant shield to to stop predominantly a rifle round, to keep it simple. So with this emergency preparedness grant, I have since, I don't have it yet, but I've purchased a a bullet resistant shield that will stop a rifle round. So if we get into a situation where we have someone, you know, using an AK-47 or using some other type of rifle, that we have the ability to to address that. And I think that's key with the officers to know that they have that added protection. It is a little heavier, but but the trade off is it could save them their lives. So so we're happy. We're happy about that, that that's that's going to be coming in shortly. Department reorganization. I'm still working on that. So, you know, I've been talking to, you know, some people about it and talking, trying to think about our best way to do that. So that's still a work in progress. And and, you know, we I think, I'm hoping that I don't hit any speed bumps and we can we can move forward with that. But but currently, it's it's a work in progress and and we'll do it as best we can to get the department reorganized. I have, I'm really excited about the way the the way I have it planned out to split the department up and to give to, you know, we'd have a patrol division or a patrol operations side. And then we would have a a personnel and administrative side, similar to what MRI has requested it suggested that we do. And I think their suggestion was was a was a good suggestion. I've tweaked it a little bit based on the circumstances in our in our department. But overall, it's I'm excited about the chance to be able to implement this and and get it going. So I think you guys were had, you know, were discussing contract negotiations. So I'll just leave that. But I just know that we are working on that. I've been, I brought in with Scott and Sue to to work on that. So I'm hoping for a smooth process there. Forced overtime update. I wanted to just let you know that I think that although we're never gonna, it's never going to be a case where we don't have some forced overtime. We I think we're at the point where we have eliminated that to where it's not such an impact on the offices at this point. I recently had a meeting with the union president and we and I and I brought that up. And we were both concurring that at this particular point, I think we're we're okay. We're doing good. At any moment, that can change. If my staffing drops, or if something else happens, you know, overtime becomes an issue. But at this particular point, I, you know, I don't want to sound like George W. on USS Abraham Lincoln there and say mission accomplished. But I think that we're at a point where we're doing really well with that. But I'm constantly looking at that. And I'm constantly looking at ways to diminish that. So it's a constant struggle to to make sure that these guys have their time off. Training committee. Kevin, I think you brought up about training so the last time. So so just so you know where I'm working, I'm getting a little closer to having a formal process in place for offices requesting training, et cetera. I think I'm going to have my supervisors, I just was I was working on the form again today, but it will be the officer will put in for the training and will go through a review process through the supervisors, their immediate supervisor. As part of the reorganization, I want to split the department up into those two 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 divisions. And with that, at some point, I envision having goals and objectives for each one of the divisions. And that's one of the MRI studies. And it's silly for us to spin our wheels without some type of direction in which way we're going to go. So once I can get the department structured, get a person in place that's going to be supervised in those particular areas, then I want to have them prepare some goals and objectives. That's going to be one of the big things with the with the with the training is that if an officer wants training, it's got to meet some of those goals or objectives or otherwise, you know, this, you know, there's a certain amount of training that, yeah, okay, it can be merit based. And you, you know, you did a good job. We'll give you the training. But I also have to look at the best way to manage the department and say, okay, how is this training going to work within the department? If you're if you've placed yourself in a job that doesn't involve this over here, but yet you want training in this over the, well, then we got to think about that, you know, it's but I think with those training requests coming up through these sergeants and having a formal process in place will will improve that a hundred percent. No one knows the patrol officer better than this sergeant. And and so I can't sit there in my position and portray that I know the intimate details of every officer there. The sergeant has a much better feel for that. And and he's going to know who's good at something. I would hope that he would have talked to the officer to find out what direction the officer wants to head as far as officer development. And I would think that that will all be portrayed in in training requests and approval of training requests. So so that process is still ongoing. It's developing. I would like to think I'll have that some type of a formal process in place within the next week to week or two as we move forward. Sergeant's promotional assessment was completed. We have, there was, I think I might have brought it up before, but I think there was seven offices that participated in the the assessment center. The initial scores have came come back from civil service to the officer. But nothing has come back to us yet. So I will get notified from civil service once they exhaust the appeal time and whatever else, if there wasn't any appeals and however that works. But the process, I I anticipate getting an official list from civil service any day now. And then I will move forward with those promotions. But but I know the officers did get their scores back. And they have been talking amongst themselves. But officially on my end, I don't have anything as far as what the scores were yet. But that's still working. SWAT analysis. One thing the study brought up was a SWAT analysis. And SWAT stands for, not SWAT, as in Special Weapons and Tactics, but SWAT with an O standing for strengths, weaknesses, weaknesses, threats, and opportunity. Thank you. I was going to have a tough time with the O. So we have, so I had a staff meeting, not this month, but last month, and we and I did it with my supervisors. And we held a SWAT analysis and and we went through the procedure. And and it was interesting. I thought it was beneficial. I got some some good feedback from the officers and on kind of their point or the supervisors on their point of view. Since then, I have rolled that out through the sergeants to the patrol officers, and I'm waiting for that to come back. So I'm waiting for them to give me back the different areas that the officers portray as as fitting into those categories as far as our strengths, our weaknesses, what opportunities are out there and what's threatening to the organization. So I think that's encouraging. And I would, I think I anticipate all those, all those analyses is back to me within the next week or two from the supervisors. But it was it was a great experience with the supervisors that I participated in at one of the recent staff meetings. So we are working on that. Officer survey. I did talk to to our union president, Officer Brady, and I want to do an officer survey. I anticipate within the next couple of weeks, I'm going to come up with something to put out a survey to the officers and allow for them to give me feedback anonymously, just working out the intricacies of that. I don't, you know, I want to tell them and, you know, that have your wife write it out. So so I don't have to look at the at the print or anything else. I I don't want to put names to anything. And I don't want to put personalities to anything. I just want to look at the survey and see where we're at. So I've come up with a pretty exhaustive survey that I think we'll touch upon, survey questions that I think we'll touch upon, all the things that that will be beneficial for the organization. And so I should have that going out to the offices within the next couple of weeks. And, you know, I enlisted the union president to hopefully work to encourage the offices to get that back to me. The more people that give it back to me, the better picture I have what's what areas that I can improve upon and what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. So that should be going should be going out shortly. And I know I don't want to keep you here too much longer. So just one of the things, Officer of the Year, when I do put that out, one of the things I am looking for is is the an officer that embodies our mission statement. Our mission statement was revised a while back ago. We recently did it again to include one of the suggestions from the from the management study. But I want to make sure that that mission statement becomes part of the functioning of the department. So as part of the Officer of the Year thing this this year particularly, I wanted to have the sergeants nominating someone that understands that mission statement and maybe is is performing to to performing in line with that mission statement. So it's not just sitting there, you know, there's something on the wall and we're not addressing or we're not we're not taking seriously. Just briefly, see if I missed anything. I don't think so. I think I've covered anything. I mean, I covered everything. If there are other, there are other things in the management study, you know, know that I'm still working on them. Some things take longer. We discussed that last time. And some things take shorter. Does anybody have any questions with anything that I've discussed?
Questions from the board? Well, no. I I had one quick one. You touched upon it a little bit, but I was a lot of the grants you talked about had the word overtime in them. And I guess my concern was we had a place where we're not overtaxing our officers and forcing overtime because we're doing too many other things.
Exactly. I mean, the 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 five mobilizations from the Governance Highway Safety Bureau or that end of things, we have been doing that every year for the last 10 years or so. Those are if if the officer doesn't choose to work that, he doesn't have to work that or she doesn't have to work that. If if we have a mobilization period, we have a certain number of offices that we can fill. We don't push that. If the if if I have 10 slots that I can fill for a pair for a mobilization and six spots get filled, then that's all that gets filled. So I don't push that upon the offices as far as overtime's concerned. The the JAG grant, when I first met with the officers and talked to them about the crime suppression grant and having that on overtime, that was one of my concerns. And I so and it remains one of my concerns. And I spoke to them about it. And our machin orders going going forward with this is that this needs to be structured so we're not impacting offices in a great deal for overtime for that. So I don't have a definitive plan exactly how we're going to deploy and when we're going to deploy. But my thought was is we're going to stretch that money out as long as we can, address as many issues as we can, with the caveat that we're not overly burdening the offices. And so those are the two grants that did contain do contain overtime with them. And then again, I think that we've come to that point, Tim, that it's not it's not an issue like it was before. And, you know, I actually forgot to do it. I was going to run a report today for like 90 days back from now, 90 days prior. And then I was going to give you an example of like three years ago and show you the difference. It's a substantial difference. You know, the way our we have overtime down back and we post, we posted on lists. There were times where we would have five or six lists going. And so when I talk about a list, I talk about it's every officer's name on the list. And you decide each officer's name as a shift that they're required to work. We would have six to seven, you know, maybe, you know, sometimes more, sometimes less. But we were dealing with that for a while because of our staffing, the way it was. Right now, I think I have, you know, a half a list that's down back. So substantial decrease in the amount of overtime. And we're constantly looking at that. You know, it's a constant battle to make sure that we got coverage. But then again, I I'm conscious of not overworking these guys. So moving forward, this is exactly the way I'm going to handle it, is it's, you know, I have a job to do, they have a job to do. We're going to try to work as much as we can with that so that there's no issues.
Is there a plan for when we get the K-9 grant, hopefully that solves the situation? Is there a plan to make that sustainable? So three years from now, we're not getting rid of the K-9 program again? Or, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think I think that the bulk of the of the expenses are going to be upfront, you know, after that is, is, you know, I have a training expense, he's, you know, the K-9 is required to go to training monthly. I don't think that's going to overburden the department. I don't think I don't think that's something that we can't we can't sustain on a on a long time thing. I also talked with the officer about fundraising. You know, he's fully, he's fully interested in doing fundraising if he needs to do that. So so between a combination of that, I think that we're going to be okay. I, you know, I definitely wouldn't have entered into something with the thought that I can't sustain it. I think that it's really, I think the bulk of the expenses are upfront. And then we're talking about a nominal training expense of, you know, one one shift a month. So something to that effect. So that's that's the goal of that. And I think it will be sustainable with no with no trouble.
Anybody else?
How soon you getting the dog?
I don't know. So we don't have the grant yet. And let me just be specific a lap. But they did say they moved us to the second phase. So I so I'm confident that we will get it. Once we the next the next part of this is I our officer is going to meet with the, I believe, the trainer. And then from there, I think they pick the dog and and they, you know, give us what they what they think is we should have. So so I'm really not sure on that. But I think if I had to guess, I would like to think maybe by the summertime or so, we might have a might have the K-9 onboard. So but with that, then he's going to have to go to training. I think the training's eight weeks to eight to 10 weeks or something to that effect. And then there's another, then he takes a short break and then he goes back for a secondary school, which will be drugs. So so realistically, out on the road and doing anything, it's probably going to be, you know, upwards of a year's timeframe. So that's probably what we're looking at for that.
My dog could use a job. Hasn't paid rent in like 10 years. It's getting old.
Are you gonna, are you gonna try to fit one of the newer cruisers with the with the kennel, with the cage, or?
Yeah. So we do. So I wouldn't take a new cruiser to do that. Kevin, I would I would take one of the older cruisers with a few more miles on it, something that's coming out of our not one of our primary cruisers.
Yep.
So I generally didn't get involved in a lot of the cruiser decisions that were made. So with the chief leaving, you know, he's assisted me in the transition to transition period here. And he's been very helpful with that. But one of the things that I was looking at is kind of projecting out my vehicle needs for the next five years. So so with that, yeah, I was sitting home a couple of weekends ago, and I probably spent three hours there. My wife's like, what are you doing? And I'm like, well, I got to get this. I want to see where my cars line up.
Yeah.
But I want to see where they like, you know, it's easy for me to go out today and say, okay, replace that one and replace this one. And then all of a sudden, four or five years from now, I I'm stuck with everything that has high mileage and my my officers don't have the tools they need. So so yes, I have looked at that. I think, you know, I've got something picked out that that has a modest amount of miles, but a few more miles. And it's probably one that we can take. And then they will pay for all the retrofit fitting going in and the kennel going into the going into the car. So.
That's good. Yeah, I just I know they take a those cars take a beating and they have a with the hot dog system and everything in it and the kennels and fitting in a certain car. It's just.
Yeah. And it was funny. I was actually, I was talking with my wife, Ken, and I was like, you can't, I can't take a car and make it a K-9 car and then put it back into patrol. It doesn't work that way. You know, once it becomes a K-9 car, it's pretty much a K-9 car. Some people like dogs. Some people don't like dogs. But so so, yeah, no, I'm looking at that. And I think we're okay with that. Again, I've been I've been looking to try to get a plan out five years for my cars at least and and go from there. And I get a pretty good solid feel of where our mileage sits now and how the replacement process will go now, obviously subject to funding. But but I think I think we'll be okay with that.
Deputy, thank you. And when you do do the Officer of the Year, hopefully you can have him in for the or her in for the
Most definitely.
Into our meeting for the presentation. So.
Okay, most definitely.
Merry Christmas to everybody at the police.
Yeah, thank you. And then the other thing, too, is when I complete the officer survey, if I, you know, I'd like to give you guys a copy of that just to see. So you guys can see where we're at and what I need to work on. I have no problem with that. So when I do finally get that, I anticipate within the next month or so, I'll compile the things like, you know, and try to highlight where we're. But I'll give it to all of you so that you can see it. I think it's important to see. I think it's important to see. to see. I think it's important to see where our guys are at now, um, and, and the guys that we have working for us. I think they're a great group of guys. I, you know, I'm, I'm confident that, um, that, uh, we can give them a great place to work and, and move forward. So.
That survey, will you do it, I maybe I missed it. Will you do it regularly? Is that what you plan on doing or?
Well, I was gonna do it now. Um, but it, but yeah, I mean, it makes sense to do it on a, on a regular basis. Uh, it doesn't give me any good to, to find out what's happening now and then, and then crash and burn in a year and a half. So, um, so I think it would be a yearly process with that. Um, at least a yearly or once every couple of years or something to that effect, to just get a gauge for where, where the officers sit. Um, you know, but it's important for them to understand, you know, it's important for it to be anonymous for them. It's important for them to realize, to have the, the confidence that they can speak their mind and, and, and give me back something that they, so I, I just gotta work through that. I don't want them to think in any way, shape or form that there's gonna be any type of, uh, uh, way for them to, for me to, to, to understand who, who did what for the survey. I, I, it specifically needs to be anonymous back. So, but I, but I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that it will show that we're, we're doing a good job. I really do, um, hopeful that, I'm hopeful I get a good, um, a good, uh, return rate from what I put out. I got, uh, you know, 29 offices now, uh, full-time offices, um, that I'll be sending 30. Uh, the ones in the academy, I probably will not send the, the survey to because it is, they've had limited exposure to the department. But, um, but anybody else that's been here, you know, hopefully we get some of that back. And I'm, and I'm, and I'm happy to share it. I'm, I'm enthused. I hopefully that we can, uh, I can share it with you and see where we're at. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tom Mange is reporting. They don't really have much for you. Uh, as you know, they, uh, the school's closed. Senior center is closed currently. Um, they are still, you know, doing their Wheels, Meals on Wheels program, um, and, and, you know, doing what they can to take care of the seniors. Uh, library has gone, uh, curbside at this point. Um, and although, you know, uh, we do continue to keep in full staffing here at the, uh, at town hall and we are remaining open, um, we are requesting that if anybody does have to visit town hall, that they just, uh, you know, try to give us a call for us. We, we do wanna just, um, maintain as little occupancy here as, as we can. So if we can set up appointments or a lot of times, we can help you over the phone. We do have our drive-up window available and working. So we're also encouraging people to use that. Um, but if you do wanna come to town hall, we're here. And just, uh, obviously don't come if you're sick, wear your mask. Um, and then, uh, you know, we have a greeter who will, you know, work through some questions with you just to make sure everything's okay. Uh, you guys did get a copy of the list of committees that Alex had requested and, uh, Tim had requested that, uh, if you're interested in being a liaison to any one of these boards of committees, you guys can, uh, work it out amongst yourselves and maybe come up with a plan next week. What I would recommend if you, if you do wanna follow through with this is that, um, you know, once it's assigned, you reach out to the chairman of the particular committee that you're liaising to. And you just kinda discuss with them if they have any issues or anything that, that they want you to be aware of. I don't think it, um, it is in anybody's interest for you to attend the meetings. Um, you know, they're duly appointed committees and, and I think that for the most part, they're capable of handling their business and their affairs. But if they do need the assistance or wanna give you guys a heads up or give the board in general a heads up or come in and, um, address us in any way, shape or form, that'd be great. And, and they certainly could start with whoever their liaison is.
I noticed the finance committee's not on the list. Is that, is there a reason you didn't wanna liaison there or just an oversight?
Um, yeah, probably just, it's probably on another page that didn't print. But there's actually, you know, so there are other committees or other quasi-boards and different things. We actually have, like, we have representatives to Old Colony Planning Council, we have representative to the MBTA Advisory Board. So the fact is that we already have that representative. But it would be probably helpful if one of you guys were interested in, you know, one of those to be liaison to that representative. Um, you know, just in case there's something that's coming up and they want to, you know, they're, they're always known and I try to reach out to them that if they're ready, if they wanna come and visit this board or present anything to the board to reach out to me. But, you know, a lot of times you guys might have some interest in either or any of those. And this would certainly be an opportunity for you to, uh, you know, reach out to them. But yeah, if there's anything missing from there like that, then, you know, put it on there. If you're interested in it, put on, put it on there. And, um, I think, yeah, you know, probably you can assign it as the chair next time they meet.
Yeah. I would say, um, just kinda fill out two or three that you might be interested in. And next time we meet, we'll have it on the agenda and, and we'll appoint from there. Obviously, if there's just one person interested in one board, that'll be easy enough. If there's two, I'll just decide from there, you know, how we split it up.
Can we nominate other people?
Absolutely.
I nominate Kevin.
Tim, Tim, Tim.
You might not wanna meet, miss the next meeting. Let's just put it that way.
Yeah. So other than that, uh, you know, Sue and I are really just getting into the budget. Actually, Sue's gotten quite into it more than I have. Um, if you wanna, you know, we have a ways to go. Hopefully I'll, I, I, my intention would be to give you guys a preliminary budget, um, by the end of this month. You know, you don't have to meet on it, but I will get it to you. And if you decide you wanna meet and chat about it at all, um, at the end of the month, we can. Otherwise, we'll bring it back up in January. Uh, you know, it's, it's going to be pretty rough and preliminary, but, you know, we have a lot of work to do on it. And, um, it's, it is definitely going to be a difficult year for sure. And I know, so if you have anything you wanna add at all?
About the budget.
About the, oh, okay. Um, so yeah, if you guys would like to hear an update?
I'll stand up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we put in three requests so far, and the fourth one is gonna be going in within the next couple of days. So, um, we also have outstanding purchase orders that we haven't received, we have, and approximately another $20,000 in salaries. So, uh, total request to date, including the purchase orders and the salaries that haven't been, um, invoiced is 1.8. And we have available funds of 2.5 million. So, um, we still have a remaining balance of 754,000 that we have, that we can, um, apply for. And I'm sure there's gonna be something coming up in the next couple of weeks with the increased pandemic. I have a meeting with Pullman County Cares on Thursday, the Accountants, uh, Finance Directors Group. Probably gonna be the repeat of what you heard on Monday, but I'm gonna listen in on that and see if there's anything just, um, and we have received one reimbursement back for the 227,000. And request number two and three, they just got back to me this past week with, um, some questions and answers. Got it back to them. So I'm just waiting to hear, um, that yes, you're approved. And we're gonna get two more checks hopefully with, within the next couple of weeks.
Is there a deadline for filing?
You have to have the invoices in by December 30th. But we have until 45 days later to submit those invoices. So we, we have until mid-February to submit them. Right now, they haven't extended invoices beyond December 30th. So we do have, um, the bulk of the outstanding purchase orders are completed at the school. Um, they received about 50,000 out of the 300,000 this week. So we're gonna get invoice for those by the end of the month. But if they don't get invo, if they don't get them in and we don't get invoice, we're not gonna get paid for them unless they change the.
Well, hopefully they'll change the rules if they have to be because, uh, all the towns are gonna be in the same situation with the increase and everything. So.
Well, unfortunately, the rules have to be changed in Washington. So.
Oh, that's a well-oiled machine. It shouldn't be a problem.
I'm just gonna drop line.
Anything else, Scott?
No.
So my plan for the next meeting was to take the 28th off, um, Christmas vacation and all that with pay. You'll receive your full selectmen salaries. Um, unless something else comes up, but you'll hear if it does. And then we'll be meeting in January, whether that's in person or on Zoom. I guess we'll make that decision between now and then depending on what happens between now and then. Could be anything. So.
Are there any modified hours around Christmas for the town hall or will it be open?
Yeah. Um, yeah, Sue can give you the hours. The, we are open on the 28th.
So, so contractually, um, with the clerical union within the town hall, so we kinda follow, everybody follows their union. So we have, uh, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day off. New Year's Eve is a half day and New Year's Day off. I was gonna post it on the website. Um, I didn't get a chance to do it today, but I will do it tomorrow.
Okay. Awesome.
Anything else? I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.